Gentlemen, I'm sorry for the delay. Executive session, or excuse me, Committee of the Whole, pardon me, ran late this evening. Chair would like a motion to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington. It is Tuesday, December 3, 2024, and it is 7:16 PM. So I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes, here.
Trustee Hayes? Trustee Perkins?
Here.
Trustee Shaller?
Here.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Here.
Trustee Van Ryn?
Yes.
President Richardson.
Marvelous, yes, thank you. Agenda item 3 is to pledge allegiance. Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Agenda item 4 is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees' meeting of November 19, 2024. Are there questions or edits or comments on the minutes for the clerk? They're being done. Chair would like a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting from November 19, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Shaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryn?
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes. President's remarks. I'd like to recognize Nick Allen for some comments at this time.
Thank you, President Richardson. First, I want to apologize. The last time I was here was in August, and I used the bathroom, and I see that it wreaked a lot of havoc on the building. So I won't do that again. I do also want to mention that I'm growing a beard to look like Jim Bateman. Two reasons for me being here tonight. The first is the food drive, which Cuba Township called me and asked me to help with last year, and I was fortunate to wrangle up my neighbor John Shaller to help me with that. We're doing that again. We have 20 boxes throughout the Village of Lake Barrington currently. People have requested a box from the northern part of the village all the way down to the Pepper Park area. We have Santa Claus coming on the 21st of December, so if you're around, I know last year, Trustee Van Ryn and Trustee Shaller were able to come and visit with Santa and bring some food. The Countryside Fire Department will be there, and we'll load a truck with food and then take it over to the food pantry. And John, I don't remember exactly how much food we had last year, but we had a whole room full. So the community really came together, and a lot of the businesses collected a lot of food. So thanks.
Not only was the Hummer filled, but we also had pickup trucks and a paddle truck, and there was a lot of good stuff.
Yeah, we had a lot of food. So it was good to see. And our partner at Kelsey Roadhouse has been fantastic, and as you all know, they decorate the heck out of that place. So it's really a great spot for Santa to visit. The other thing I wanted to come before you and just give you an update on, I did come in August, and we talked about the Build Our Preserve initiative. The referendum passed overwhelmingly countywide. Countywide, it passed with about 63% for the forest preserve to borrow those bonds for purchasing and maintaining and building new preserves. But in our area of the county, it actually passed in several of our Lake Barrington precincts with over 70% of the vote. So it was overwhelming, and I think people very much want to see more trails and more protection for our environment. So thank you for all your support. The Forest Preserve District has just elected new leadership, so every two years, they elect their leaders from within, so they have a new president and a new vice president. We'll be reaching out to them to try and get a sit-down meeting. Next on their agenda, I've talked to staff. They plan on coming forward with their capital improvements plan for this money in the first quarter. So it may be that people look at our website, look at our work, and may be calling some of you, since you're listed as supporters, just give it the thumbs up and tell them to give us at least $25 million, and we'll be happy. Well, not us, but the project. Any questions?
Chair is happy to recognize trustees' comments. If we'll go, just go around real quick. Suzy, anything?
Nothing, but thank you for putting this all together and keeping it going, and then as well as the food drive.
My pleasure.
Trustee Shaller?
Yeah, obviously encouraging everyone to participate or spread the word, and definitely, if you're not doing anything on Saturday, December 21st, it is a fun afternoon with Santa, and that lower level of the Kelsey Roadhouse revives what it used to be a long, long time ago, and they really do a heck of a decorating time. So it's a great, great afternoon and just fun time and bring...
Yes, I was there the other day on Sunday, or Saturday. It is beautiful, beautiful.
Yeah. So thank you for leading it and for me tagging along. Thank you.
It's great to see the village doing it.
Trustee Burke?
Good to see you. Thanks for your leadership on this. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Trustee Van Ryn?
Yeah, no questions, but thank you. We appreciate all you do for all of us.
And Trustee Schalmoser?
No questions. Thanks for all your help.
No problem.
Terrific.
It's a pleasure to help a good village.
Tell your mom and dad hello.
I will. Thank you all. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
And again, I won't use the restroom on the way out. Merry Christmas to you all, too.
Yep, Merry Christmas.
The only other part on President's remarks, since it's just us, and maybe somebody who will watch this someday on television. Holidays are a reflective time. This is my last Christmas presiding over this board. I was moved as to what to say tonight by actually kind of quoting Her Late Majesty Queen Elizabeth II of England, or of the United Kingdom. In November of 1992, she gave her famed Anus Horribles speech because it had been a very tough year for the royal family. And I share her views and her quotes there that I certainly relate to, given the tragedy in my own family, is that this was not a year upon which I shall look back with undiluted However, going forward, I'm very confident, both personally with my girls and me and those we love around us and our immediate family, but also after 20 years as your mayor, the future of this community is exceptionally bright, especially as the external forces confronting us gather momentum at the state and federal and international level. We are stronger than we have ever been, better prepared, and we have a unified leadership team. And so I have to believe that future generations will judge us by the work we've done, and I'm very grateful, and I certainly pay tribute to all of you who have lent sympathy and condolence to us. You know, the truth of the matter is, the only place I really behave consistently is in this chair, because I recognize since the day I sat here first time that I am a role model for our residents, especially the children in this community. Whether I'm on camera or they're here live, I have to behave. And in 26 years of sitting here, 20 as mayor and 6 as a trustee, I've only lost my temper twice in public in 26 years, which is not the same as in my personal life. So as I extend best Christmas and New Year's wishes to everyone, I have nothing else under President's remarks tonight. So we can move to Agenda Item 6.
Before we move to Agenda Item, I want to thank you, President Richardson, for the many years of service that you have provided to this community and leadership. We're in a lot better place than when I moved in 35 years ago into the village. It's much due to your leadership.
Thank you.
And also, I want to thank you for what you did a week ago with the cybersecurity. I think I and along with most of the people who are present at that event were probably shocked to hear what we are facing and scary. But somebody, we need to know it, and you provided that opportunity with some great individuals to make that awareness. So not only have you loved this community, but you're also trying to guide us down the road in the future. And on behalf of myself, and certainly, and I don't speak on behalf of all Lake Barrington shores and all the community, but thank you for everything.
Thank you. It's very kind. Your future mayor, because the petition deadline window has closed, so Andy is the de facto mayor-elect, I'm going to stay on as a volunteer after I leave office to run all this stuff to ground for us. I want to create a case study that we can take around not only the US, but the United Kingdom and Australia on this, because none of us are as well-prepared as we'd like to be or need to be. Interestingly enough, our neighbor, Eleanor Sweet from North Barrington, Winston is to them as LBS is here. It's a gated community that represents a big part of the population, and like LBS, they have their own water system. And so she's, I think, reaching out to the three speakers for help and advice on how to harden their water system for this, both potable water for drinking and bathing and cooking and so forth, and then the wastewater subsequently. So I have been pleased with the response that I've received on this, and I was grateful that all of you took the time to be a part of this. So thank you. Thank you. Second, Agenda Item 6, second, first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the board. There is no one seeking recognition, so we'll move to Agenda Item 7, which is the Consent Agenda. We've gone through all these issues in the Committee of the Whole, so I don't think we need to revisit them. So I will simply ask, and then I'll read them all as part of it. Chair would like a motion to approve and block Agenda Items 7A through H. A, consideration of the design engineering proposal from Gee Walt Hamilton in the amount of $16,500 for the 2025 street resurfacing program. B, consideration of a memorandum of understanding for the dedication of a certain roadways within the North Point subdivision to the Village of Lake Barrington. C, consideration of an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding by and among DS Arms Inc., Defense Security Arms Incorporated, in the Village of Lake Barrington. D, consideration of a repair estimate and change order estimate in the amount of $120,347.62 from CWF Restoration of Elmhurst, Illinois, for the repairs and remodeling of the restrooms, village boardroom, community room, conference room, and hallway at Lake Barrington Village Hall. E, consideration of the classification and compensation report prepared by MGT Impact Solutions LLC. F, ILCMA 2015 Winter Conference. G, MCI 2025, I misspoke earlier, ILCMA 2025 Winter Conference. G, MCI 2025 Winter Seminar. And H, approve the Village Board of Trustees' and Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals' 2025 regular meeting schedule. May I have a motion to approve and block?
So moved.
Thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Shaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryn?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Agenda item 8 is the Treasurer's Report.
Before we move on, I just have a few comments. Sorry, Peggy. We just blew through a lot of good stuff, but I just want to recognize the work that went into a lot of these things that are on this page, because we kind of check the box. But I want to thank staff. I want to thank Jim Bateman and Becky for a ton of work on these MOUs that took a long time to get them done and get them in place. So there's a lot of back and forth that we don't see that goes into getting these documents done. I want to thank Trustee Hayes, who can't be with us tonight, for all the work that he did along with Sharon on the, for the compensation reporting stuff he did, to use your term, yeoman's work. And I spent a lot of phone time, too. He was very good at keeping us on the loop on what he was doing. He made some really good amendments to that last document that you saw that gave us a lot more flexibility. He was wise to understanding that we weren't painting ourselves in a corner with that. In fact, the opposite. We were giving ourselves a framework by which we can put a meaningful plan in place that works for everybody. So I really appreciate his effort. So just wanted to note, there's a lot of work that goes into these Consent Agenda items. It seems like we just, they happen automatically, but behind the scenes, there's a tremendous amount of work. So thanks to everybody.
Yeah, and before the clerk calls the roll, since it was moved and seconded, I just build on that. I've been both staff and superior for a long time in both roles in my career, and one of the problems, and Andy points it out very nicely, very diplomatically, the temptation when you are the recipient and the decision-maker is to think it happens by magic fairy dust. Lord knows, I confront that in my day job. And my late wife, rest her soul, would forever hear me complain about it doesn't happen by accident. And I look at the things we've gotten done in this community together. You know, we have had tremendous staff commitment, and I couldn't be prouder of it because I know it takes an audacious amount of work, and I appreciate you recognizing that publicly for the benefit of the staff on behalf of the entire board. Clerk will now please call the roll.
We're good to call it back.
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you. Now we're in Agenda Item 8. That was, no, the main event, now the main event. I am always a lap behind.
I couldn't wait to get up to that.
I love talking into the microphone. Okay, so for you tonight, you have the six months ended October 31st. So it's hard to believe we're already halfway through our fiscal year. We have assets totaling $3,479,000. Our liabilities are $394,000, and our equity is at $3,85,000. Our revenues to date for the six months are $2,426,000. Our expenses are at $2,229,000, leaving us a net revenue, net income of almost $197,000. At this point last year, we were showing a $513,000 loss. We like to compare those numbers on an apples-to-apples basis, so below that, we pull out what we call our extraordinary items, which are usually road and some of the things having to do with federaling and so forth. When we do that, we'll show like what we'll call regular operations, net income or loss at $895,000 for this year, and last year was $574,000. So that's about a $320,000 difference. I have talked about this in the past, so there's, some of its timing, road and bridge tax and property tax is about $42,000. That's totally timing. We've just collected more at this point this year than we have in past years at this point. We do have, the Deco grant is now in these financials. I did mention we received that in December, so that $38,000 is actually in here as revenue. The expense for that $38,000 was last fiscal year, so there'll be no offset for this. We did not recognize it until we actually knew we were going to receive it, because with the way the government works, it did take over a year. So I'm glad we didn't try to recognize it last year, and then we'd have to reverse it out and all that kind of stuff. And then, secondly, there's a $97,000 miscellaneous income amount that was recorded this month. That's from the insurance proceeds from IML RMA. $27,000 of that has been expensed in interior property repairs, so to speak. That was just the demo part, and so they've given us the $67,000 ahead of time for the remodeling, and that did come up earlier in the Committee of the Whole.
Where does that income recognize, Peggy? I'm sorry.
Miscellaneous income.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, kind of a, it's kind of a catch-all.
Yep.
Because it wasn't planned. So those are two larger items that explain that. Building revenue is up this year, about $16,000. A portion of that really has to do with our, I think, our higher, you know, rates, but also our expense on, you know, corresponding debts a little bit higher as well. I guess the biggest difference on the expense side, our engineering is down $97,000 from last year at this point. We did a lot more roads last year, so it's nothing to do with anything else than just less roads. And then our legal is down about $25,000, and that, there was a lot going on last year with new staff and changing staff and a lot of those things going on, so that increased our legal fees. So that is down from last year as well. So that's all good news. I don't have a lot more to say on that. I will talk about, we do this quarterly report every quarter. It basically shows the non-MFT funds, how they're being spent by vendor. That came up one year, and if you guys aren't interested, I'm going to keep doing it, but I think it was Trustee Mitchell at one point had requested. So we've done that since he's been here, and that's been quite a while. But we report by vendor to see how we're spending our money per, by vendor in our MFT fund. You'll see a lot goes to Cuba Township. But first of all, corrective asphalt materials, that was for the Reckonite application, they were paid $73,000 in the quarter. Cuba Township for various roadwork, you know, culverts and patching and all the little kind of littler stuff we've done, you'll see, if you look through that, this is page 13, if you look through that column, the largest number is a $16,000 amount, and that was patching and, what does it say? Sorry, my glasses on. Of course. I thought I brought them up here. I didn't.
Oh.
Thank you, yeah. But for the most part, everything's like less than $5,000. It's all little stuff. That did come to $61,000 for Cuba Township. And then the road maintenance, we paid up monthly, the $13,321 includes basically small piling for the most part and some other smaller items. That came to almost $80,000 for the quarter. And then, I'm sorry, for, maybe through October, so for, I guess it's a quarter, sorry.
Question real fast. That's $16,779. Was that that Pepper, Sharon Pepper Road in North Point? Was that that intersection?
Yes.
The 16 grand?
Yes.
Remember, we were talking about what a mess it was there?
Yes.
Is that what that was?
Yes.
About patching and repair?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And then also, we pay Geske and Sons so far to date $567,536 for the road, 2024 road program. And then just little amounts to the state treasurer and to Lake County treasurer for the traffic signal maintenance. But we do this quarterly just to kind of give you a snapshot of how we're spending our money by vendor in that account, is tons of BFF amount of money. Any questions on that, or is that interesting to people to receive once a quarter? I mean, it's easy to do, it's just, you know.
I like it.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I'm glad to hear that, because we started doing it, and I don't know, people, you know, like to see it or pay attention to it. Okay. Okay, we'll move to page 14, which is our actual budget report. You can see we're doing well against budget right now, 75% actual to budget, or for the revenue, excuse me. But I've talked about this before, we have some big items that have been collected to date. It just got loud, or was that me? Sorry. You can see we've collected almost all our real estate tax, which is a big, a big part of our budget. We've collected all the road and bridge tax. Those will pull our percentages up a little bit, but that's all timing, you know, that all even out over the course of the year. And then you'll see on page 15, our expense, our actual, if our expense is actual to budget is at 57%, just under half. Some things we haven't spent at all, and other things we've completely spent, like a lot of our road has been done, a lot of our engineering has been done. So those numbers go back and forth. But if you look by account and kind of scan down here, nothing to me is really striking. I think the only thing I really noticed that stands out to me is the building permit revenue. We've almost hit the budget, and we're at six months. So that's good news. There's nothing else that really, I feel, unless you have a question, that merits a lot of conversation, but happy to discuss any of these.
Questions for the Treasurer?
Okay. Okay, well, that's all I have for the general fund then, and then we can flip forward to, you know, most of this, you know, activity going on, the rest of the funds, motorfield tax, and now it's almost $550,000 in it, so plenty to cover our road project for this coming spring, so to speak. And then, and no activity going through there currently. It'll sit there for the rest of this fiscal year until we start the project. But that road project will really be fiscal year '25, or '26, excuse me. It'll probably start in, we're doing the plans in February, but by the time it starts, it'll be kind of March, April, but most should fall in fiscal year '26, not this fiscal year. Does that make sense? The motorfield tax road program, be fiscal year '26.
Got it, okay.
Okay. I didn't mean to be confusing there. And then lastly, we'll talk about the water sewer funds. We just like to bring up, you know, there's got a million, what did I say in there? About a million six, I believe. About a million seven in funds there for current assets that we can spend as needed. And then going to the warrants, I mean, we just, I'm sure we just had a board meeting like two weeks ago. Also, the warrant list is rather small. I just have one to mention, and that's $9,000 for Bartlett Tree Services. This tends to trim and maintain all the trees at VLB. I know they were here for two days, doing a lot of work out there. That was not budgeted, but it was approved by the board back in October, and we'll be sure to put that ongoing maintenance in the budget next year. And that is all I have for the financial statements.
And there are questions for the Treasurer, excuse me. Okay.
And I can quickly go over health insurance. I'm up here, I think it's, I think that's under Treasurer's report.
Please do.
Okay. Basically, the outline, as what we've done in the past, is all the same, just the numbers are a little bit higher, insurance has gone up. And as a reminder, for, if the employee chooses the PPO, they do pay 13% of the premium. But they choose HMO, they pay 7.5% of the premium. It is a high deductible health plan, so the village has an HRA in place. So once the employee reaches out of pocket of $1,690 for an individual, the HRA card kicks in, and then the employee is no longer paying those expenses, they have an HRA card that is charged back to the village through flexible benefit. It's the recommended carrier, we've been using that for two or three, this will be the third year now, and it's actually been easy to work with. We used Ameriflex for the first two years, and that was a nightmare. I can't tell you how many complaints I got from staff, like every day was a different complaint. So I was really glad we made that switch. We are individually rated, so each employee is paying a rate based on their own age and their own sex. Bigger organizations might do a composite rate, but that just means young people are helping subsidize the older people in the group. But in this case here, everyone is paying their rate based on their age. As everyone gets older, their insurance gets more expensive, and also insurance is taking a, I mean, sorry, inflation is taking a toll on this as well. The insurance for, per the different staff go from eight, almost 8% to almost 20%. So it varies on the individual, but for overall village, our premium is about 12.5%. I mean, the dental's up 3%. So that's a reasonable increase. But yeah, so the village is bearing the same increase, same percentage increase as the employees. Obviously, our number is greater than the employee per dollar-wise, but it's the same percentage. Other than that, we did change the parameters of the HRA just a little bit because those numbers changed, but we have, it's all based on what we can do by law in a high deductible health plan. So we are giving them as much as we can by law. Any questions?
The, for D, we're just, the motion is to approve the plan. Is there further action that's required?
No.
Okay.
There's some signatures.
There are some signatures that Rebecca's going to get, three trustees and... And that's mostly for the HRA. Yeah.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then Chair would like a motion first to approve and block Agenda Items 8A through C. A, approve the financial statements as of October 31, 2024. B, pay bills in the amount of $76,106.94 as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated December 3, 2024. And C, pay bills in the amount of $172,918.48 as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated December 3, 2024. May I have a motion and block, please?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. And may I have a second? Trustee Perkins, thank you both. Clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Shaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryn?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. And then Agenda Item 8D, Chair would like a motion to approve the employee health and dental plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield as administered by Better Business Planning Incorporated, and that the HRA and HSA be administered by Flexible Benefit Service LLC. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Burke and Shaller?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Wonderful. Clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Agenda item nine is the administrator's report.
I have nothing to report this evening, thank you.
Agenda item 10 is the clerk's report.
Only reporting that we do for the board meeting, the special meeting of the board trustees next Wednesday, the 11th of December, it begins at 6:00 PM.
Agenda item 11, reports of the standing committee, branding and comms, trustee Van Ryan.
Thank you, President Richardson. Couple of things to report, based on last month's meeting, the decision to not increase our local property tax levy, we did issue a press release to local media, it has not been picked up yet from our latest status survey, however, we're hoping to get some media coverage on that. We have posted that to our LinkedIn page as well for our residents to see. We continue to update our LinkedIn page frequently, as well as our other social media channels. Thank you to Rebecca and the team. So we encourage all of our residents to visit and see all of our latest news on both our website and our social media channels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item 11B, econ development, trustee Burke.
Thank you. Should be passing around in front of you a colorful chart. Peggy was always, as she does her great analysis each month on our retail sales tax revenue, she singled out the restaurant business this time and provided some great historical data on this, so I kind of want to walk you through it. I tried to take what she gave me and simplify it and put it graphically. So we have food and liquor sales in the village, starting in 2017 through 2023, and know that in this chart, there's all the comings and goings of the various restaurants that have opened and closed, places like the Horseshoe Grill and the Manico's, et cetera, right? But, so this captures the flow all the way through, and I think what's kind of astounding about this, you know, you see the low watermark in 2020, which was the full impact of COVID, and also you recognize that that's when we decided to put the grant program in place, of which was four grants of $10,000 each to area restaurants to help them make, defend themselves and put themselves in, as we stated it, we wanted them to build capabilities that would not only allow them to stem the challenges that they were facing, but one of the other requisites is that it would make them better for the long haul. It wasn't just a patch, but something that would make them more easily survive COVID, but also be better. And I think you can see that $40,000 investment at the lower watermark, you know, in 2020, that our restaurant business has recovered quite nicely. And in fact, if you look strictly at food and liquor, you'll see that we've come all the way back from the high watermark that we saw in 2017, and 2023 was a high watermark for us. Keep in mind that, you know, there, in that, what we're also not reflecting is, you know, we've had downtime from the Manico's, between the Manico's and Lake Barrington Steakhouse. So Peggy was also kind enough to remind us that if, if Lake Barrington Steakhouse even performs even remotely as close to what the Manico's do, and we have certainly high hopes that they'll do that or better, that that will be additive to this. So you'll see that these numbers are continuing to grow. The other thing that treasurer Hirsch put in there, she was showing the introduction of the home rule tax that was applied, starting in 2020 in a partial year to the restaurant business. So you can see we put a separate line item in there for that. And so you can see, these are just estimates that are about 50% of, so that, rather than, for her trying to actually go in and calculate it all, we used estimates of 50%. So you can see graphically, that if you actually add the home rule, that for 2023, that we were over $100,000 in total revenue generated based against our restaurant business. So the restaurant business appears to be alive and well, and I congratulate all of you for having the foresight to recognize, and as treasurer Hirsch so adeptly put, you know, in here, that it looks like we're being paid back, and we're being paid back nicely. And it would suggest that not only that, but the work that we have done with our restaurant, and we have done work with all of them, and even, for example, the sale of Kelsey Roadhouse into the new owners, we put a lot of time and energy into that, as did staff. We put some money into that, but you will see over time that the Kelsey Roadhouse will be rewarding us from an ongoing annuity, Kevin, as you'd like to say, for, for the efforts that we put in, and recognizing that there was a real opportunity to make Kelsey Roadhouse something special here in Lake Barrington, and they're proving to be that. So I think in our years, we're going to see some, as Lake Barrington Steakhouse comes on board, if everything else remains relatively stable, and Kelsey Roadhouse continues to gain momentum, I think we're going to see really positive results here. So just wanted to share that with everyone, and give Peggy a shout out as usual for the great analysis that she provides to this board on this item. So that's my report. Any questions on this? Anyone?
I have one quick question.
What is, are we still looking at Barrington Steakhouse? What's their opening date?
Soon, anytime, anytime. According to Sean, he was hoping to be in before Thanksgiving, but you know how these things go, he says it's, but he is in a hiring mode, so he's adding staff, he wouldn't be adding staff if he weren't ready. So we're hopeful it's before the end of the year, but we'll see. I haven't, didn't get an update for him more recently, I've stopped bugging him about that, but it's moving forward, it's just, obviously, I think they want to make sure they get it right, and I think they're, they're taking their time in making the changes that they need to, with the facility, with the menu, and with the staff, to give the kind of steakhouse experience that they want to be able to provide. So we'll just have to continue to be patient for that. Don't know if staff saw the permit come in for the sign?
They were working on that last week, there were some emails back and forth, basically with the contractor and Sean and the building department and myself, so it is in progress.
So that's also important, that's a big commitment on their part, telling us that they're in it for the long haul, that the sign not only supports Lake Barrington Steakhouse, but the other retailers that are in that retail center, as we have Sean saying now. So we're excited about that, too. So stay tuned, hopefully sooner rather than later. I know, I'm excited, we're all excited to get there, I tell Sean that, so he knows we'll all be banging down the door when it comes time.
Right. We want to make our few years' leave.
That's the same thing my wife said, she said, we're having company over the holidays, can I make a reservation there or not? So we'll have to find out. That's my part of it, no other questions.
No, no question, just administrator Peterson, myself, at American Reclamation, the chamber had a caffeine and connection event attended early in the morning, and it was really fascinating what, what is going on in that complex, and now he's going to try to, I think, utilize some of the additional space for individual vendors, which will increase even, even more traffic in there. And so it was, it was an interesting morning, educational, but also, but they're really into it, and, and wanted, they're looking for additional ways all to keep building that beyond what it is, so it's another positive for our community, I think.
Yeah, I think there's real opportunity, and, you know, we've said all along, a big part of that is finding the developer, landlord, and owner who, who wants to roll up their sleeves and work with you. And certainly Sean McHugh and his partner have shown their willingness when they picked us, and, and picked that location, and came to us and told us about their plans. I remember the first thing that Sean said, because he has another restaurant up in Cary, he said, well, we tremendously value the relationship that we have with our local village, like that, that there's critical to our success, and we're excited to hear that you believe in the same thing. So we're really excited to be in Lake Barrington, and he continues to reiterate the support that he feels from the staff, from the board, and everything that they're trying to get done. So, you know, we've, a long time, President Richardson, we've talked, we've walked, we've talked about walking the talk, and there were some times where we were talking and maybe not walking as well as we could have, but I think we bumped, we skinned our knee a couple of times, but I think we learned a lot from that, and I think this staff and this board is really now both living up to the expectation that about a village that's easy to do business with, and we're doing a lot more to continue to do that with the systems that we're putting in place. So kudos to everybody, because it takes all of these things to make this work.
Further questions, so just, this is another great example of things that don't happen by accident, and there's an awful lot of work there. I mean, where Andy's added such value is, having been so successful in business, he understands what other successful business people need, and he speaks their language fluently, and so we get the benefit of that, and I'm grateful. 11C, external relations, trustee Burke and administrator Peterson and I had lunch with our lobbyist in Springfield, Donnie Starino, about grants a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to try to get a lot more serious about that now that we've had some success with grants, and, you know, treasurer mentioned how some of the work that Fidelity Consulting did two or three years ago, finally the money shows up, and that's emblematic of how some of these processes work with, with, with federal and state, and even local governments, is you work, 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 and then the benefit comes two or three years later. But we did get the money, and it was because of our lobbyist's help in Springfield, so I was grateful for that, and I think that's just a model going forward for us. And we've got a good guy in Washington now with Jim Crum, and I think we can look at other things, especially if we talk about solar at some point, down near the business park as, as a potential idea. Beyond that, I have nothing. So 11D is finance, HR, and admin, trustee Hayes is absent, does the administrator have a report for him?
I do not this evening.
Okay, then. 11E, roads and infrastructure, trustee Schalmoser.
Thank you, President Richardson. Yesterday, Sharon Peterson and I, we went out, looked at some, one subdivision, we looked, went with Darren Monaco from Coalt-Hamilton, and we went to Wedgewood Trail, that's going to be scheduled for next year, excuse me, next few months, in April, May timeframe, and we reviewed other subdivisions, and they're on, on schedule for 2026 and 2027. Review as needed, and deploy funds as needed, so relatively late season next year, 0.43 miles, I think, is, is what it comes to, with Reclamite to follow, so nothing more to report. Thank you.
Question?
I have a question, please. I think I keep asking this over and over. This coming paving season is just Wedgewood Trails?
That is correct. That has been.
And that is not with MFT, or is with MFT?
It is with MFT.
And what is the expected cost of that?
$550,000.
Okay, so that's what we have MM, basically, to cover an MFT right now. Phew, I just couldn't get that straight. Maybe I was thinking it wouldn't cost that much to do it, and what was that, $554? So MFT for Wedgewood Trails this year, then a lighter season, non-MFT, we let MFT accumulate?
Yes.
And then?
Yes, typically it's been MFT every other year.
Every other typical.
But what we did this time around is it was actually calendar year 2023 and calendar year 2024 was general fund. Normally, calendar year 2024 would have been MFT, but we decided to skip that year and have it build up a little bit more.
Got it.
Yes, and, and.
Plus about 18 to 20K a month, so it's about two, less than 240 a year.
Right. Got it. Thank you for clarifying.
11F, public safety, trustee Schaller.
Thank you, President Richardson. Lieutenant Kirk, as far as the Lake County Sheriff's Department, I think it's been relatively quiet, but it's the holiday season, gifts get stolen from front doors, and Cyber Sunday or Monday, and a lot of scammers going on.
Well, typically, we don't like to use the Q word, it's a taboo in our profession, but I'll, I'll give you a pass this time. Yeah, there's a lot going on in the county, but just not in Lake Barrington, knock on wood, so we're trying to keep it that way. Like I said last month, just, you know, with the increase in packages that are going to be out there, there's going to be people out there that are going to be trying to take them, and, like I said, vehicle burglaries were on the rise last month, and, you know, lock your cars and keep your packages off your porch if you can. I don't have anything else, if anybody had anything they needed addressed, I'd be happy to.
Are there questions for the lieutenant?
Thank you, sir. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Department as well. As far as the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, I want to thank them for, again, participating in our thanksgifting program. Be happy to know that they are not going to increase their tax levy to the maximum this year, although the village of Lake Barrington is at zero, the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District is going up 3.4%. I guess before you have to have a public hearing, you can go up to 4.9, but they're not going to this year, how lucky we are. Wauconda Fire Department, they are going up 4.9%, and deputy Kevin Miller retired after 35 years. Following President Richardson's excellent cybersecurity workshop, I spoke to both chief Scott Moltisi from the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, and subsequently to chief Pat Kane of the Wauconda Fire District, and I asked both of them if they could join with us sometime after the first of the year to talk about how that impacts our emergency action plan, and both have agreed to do that. I asked lieutenant Kirk to get involved with someone from the county, and we're going to try to set up such a meeting in the latter part of January, because I think it's, it's very important that we have this emergency action plan. It really doesn't say much about, about cybersecurity, but we need to.
It's continuity of operations as well. And I've, I've spoken with Dan Eder, who's the head of Lake County Emergency Management, and with Cary Zanoni at Good Shepherd, so I'd like to do this on a Saturday morning, so that people aren't looking at their watch, thinking I've got to go back to my meeting at 2 o'clock or something, so that we can get this right. It may be a little harder, but, and we'll reach out to Commonwealth Edison and Nycor, and one of the things that they mentioned, John, that you touted, and I think it's spot on, and we didn't talk about this in committee of the whole, but I don't think we need to spend any money on consulting help right now, when all three of the speakers made clear the free stuff that's available that will help us figure out what we want to do, and because a lot of this investment in continuity of operations is really infrastructure and public safety, and I'll, once I leave, I'm not covered by the Open Meetings Act, so I can talk to these guys. So I want to get after this.
Pick a date, pick a Saturday.
And, and I, I promise I will get that rolling.
Okay.
I'll do it for two and a half weeks, and then I'm good the last half of the month after the 18th.
Bill Hogan, who is the president of the Wauconda Fire District Board, is also business manager at Good Shepherd Hospital, and after the meeting, he mentioned to me, he said they ran an exercise at Good Shepherd on cybersecurity. And what happens, obviously, if their whole database and their whole internet system and computer program goes down? Interesting. Nurses don't know how to administer IVs without computers. He said it was amazing, what are you going to do if they're looking for IVs and they don't have any idea what they're, what they're doing? He said it was really a shocker, and a, just for one instance.
Yeah, same with the water supply.
Yeah.
Without the power source, you really are dependent on alternative sources, and hospitals, along with lots of businesses, use lots of water.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So anyhow, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. 11G, open spaces and special events, trustee Perkins.
Thank you very much. I have nothing today.
That's good, too. Agenda item 12, old business, there is none, ordinance is 13, none. 14, is, this is what we just did?
No, this is for the board minutes, that was going to be the whole minutes.
Okay. Oh, I see, I see. Okay. Then chair, pardon me, chair would like to, like a motion that a portion of the meeting be closed to the public effective immediately for purposes of discussing executive session minutes, correct, Mr. Bateman?
Correct.
May I have that motion, please? Trustee Van Ryan, thank you, may I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, will call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. And Allie and Peggy, we will ask you to excuse yourself temporarily, and we will call back when we go back into open session.
That is, if there's something else, that would be right, that's what it's right.
Yes.
Just vote on the resolution.
Okay, great, thank you. Chair would declare that the board is now back in public session following a motion to adjourn from closed session. So we are now on agenda item 15A, resolutions. A, consideration of a resolution regarding closed session minutes and audio recordings. Would the clerk like to make any comments?
The resolution for tonight is, will just be the approval and not the release of the closed session minutes that are being considered for committee of the whole and for board of trustees, that's detailed in exhibit A.
And.
And additionally, I apologize, the change for that one item for August 10th, it says board of trustees, part one, is actually committee of the whole, part one, so I will make that adjustment.
Thank you. That is why I always do my necessary technical and conforming amendments motion. Chair would like a motion to approve resolution 2024-R-09, a resolution regarding closed session minutes and audio recordings, may I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Vote by Burke, seconded by Schaller. Moved by Burke, seconded by Schaller. Thank you both.
Nobody wanted it.